I do like sharing with you guys, that's fine.
Number thirteen, no, I don't have it. Yes, I do.
I'm getting there.
All right, I think we're all here, so may I call the Board of Education meeting of Parsippany Troy Hills Board of Education to order on Wednesday, February 7th, 2024. In compliance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 entitled Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided as specified in the act in the following manner. A meeting notice was published in newspaper and on the district website on January 17th, 2024. In addition, the notice of the meeting was posted at the municipal building, in the schools, and a copy of the notice filed with the township clerk, and transmitted to the newspapers on February 1st, 2024, including Daily Record, Star-Ledger, Parsippany Focus, Tap into Parsippany, Patch in the district website. This regular public board meeting is being video recorded as per bylaw 0168. The recordings of those meetings will be available on our district website and your video on the Go YouTube channel. We ask that you please refrain from using student or staff names in your statement. Professionalism is expected at all times. May we have the roll call, please?
Mrs. Abraham? Mr. Barrios?
Here.
Mrs. Cogan?
Here.
Mrs. Mayer?
Here.
Mr. Ray?
Here.
Mrs. Chappell?
Here.
Mrs. Wright?
Here.
Mrs. Goldrur?
Here.
Mr. Chaffa?
Here.
And can we please stand for the pleasure of the ladies?
My allegiance to the flag, on the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alrighty, let's jump right into student committee reports. We'll start with Seneca.
Hi, everyone. For the month of January, the Staff Member of the Month was Mrs. Partington, a business teacher. The Ipple students won two rounds of mock trial. This year's case was about college admissions called USV Alice Kerwin. Basically, it was like, it's like, it's mock trial, so it's a fake case, but it was about bribing a college admissions officer to get in. The prosecution team was Avery Zatelli, Corinne Vassil, Adriana Diderminico, and Carly Atwell. And then the defense team was Kimmy Jandora, Morgan Glover, Ai Tai, Hope Rosen, and Sophia Potesta. There was a STEM pathways presentation last week. Amy Sisto and Pete Gayden came from the Hydraulic Institute to present on engineering in the Paris 2024 Olympic Games. For underclassmen, there are meetings this week with their counselors for course selection. All spring sports had signup meetings, and they were, they're gonna happen on the 21st after school. The counselors held an eighth grade parent night to explain scheduling courses and answer any other questions. The Spanish Three Honors class went to the Recreatario Espanol last week. Mrs. Smith retired last week after serving as lead secretary for 25 years. Winter guard placed third in their competition at West Orange High School. NAHs is doing Valentine's Day Roses. They will be delivered during third period. There was a Target Teach meeting on the 5th. There will be a Food Science Club meeting after school in the Upper Media Center on the 8th. On the 13th, the French Club is doing a club crepe-making activity. All are welcome. Also on the 13th is the Band of PTW Concert. And on the 15th will be our Hill Senior Standouts, which is our annual superlative show at 7:00 in the auditorium. On the 20th, there will be a vaping seminar and parent night, and on the 21st, the AP Gov class will be attending a Morris Sussex Court presentation.
Thanks, Seneca. Emily?
The Drama Club had auditions for the Pitt Band in the PHS Spring Musical, The Addams Family. Science Olympiad had a Chipotle fundraiser on Monday, January 29th between 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. The PHS Winter Guard took first place at their first competition on January 27th. Performing their show entitled "Purple Rain," the Winter Guard beat five other Winter Guards in their division. Their next competition is on February 10th. Miriam Candiel got first place, finished at Somerville Girls Wrestling Tournament on January 28th, going 3-0 on the day with three pins. We held our electives fair on the 29th and 30th. Frankie DiMary placed fourth at the Morris County Boys Wrestling Tournament. On February 2nd, the Drama Club held a Broadway Night where 13 students performed Broadway songs in front of an audience. Academic Decathlon is moving up to the state competition in March. At their last competition, Lithras Sankari took top speech and top score in the, sorry, in the region, and Nika Ineshvili took top score in his division. For Black History Month, the African-American Cultural Club created student artwork, inspirational quotes, and posters entitled "Black Excellence", which highlight the many somewhat unknown achievements of African-Americans from our past as well as current heroes. Tonight, 7:00 p.m., is our Heart of Hope Pillow-Making Service Night. UNICEF will be selling $2 candy grams for Valentine's Day on the 6th, 7th, and 8th, as well as Interact Club selling candy grams next week, which is causing some competition. The Italian Club will be selling single flowers for $2 outside the cafeteria during unit lunch from February 12th to the 14th in honor of Valentine's Day. Due to the success of our Deck the Halls competition, we are having a new school-wide door decorating competition on the 15th with the theme "We Choose Love and Kindness." After the last block of the day, an extra 37 minutes will be allotted for each class to decorate their door for the prize-winning ice cream social. Our Start Program is collecting birthday items to make birthday kits for families in need. The Junior Class Council is hosting a school-wide dodgeball tournament on the 29th. And on March 1st, the Glamies Are-Curring, which is like senior superlatives hosted by the juniors.
Thanks, Emily. Do any board members have questions regarding student committee reports?
Thank you.
Seeing none, thank you so much. I appreciate it. At this time, we're gonna suspend our regular agenda and be regaled by Dr. Sutter and his presentation on...
Emily Seneca, are you sure you don't wanna stay for this riveting presentation?
And there are handouts regarding what Bob's gonna talk about.
It was so riveting, we gave you two. Hello, everyone. So, in your packets, you'll have two items. There, one is a, it's a presentation to the board, and that's for your, for your information. It's gonna have in there our goals and the objectives, and who's responsible in the evidence statements. But for this presentation, and in the interest of time, we've created a smaller PowerPoint, which has, which you'll see here, says strategic goals and updates in your packet. It's up on our presentation on our TV there. And so we'll go into it. If you look at the first page, it's gonna say goal number one. And it's members of our learning community will design student-centered opportunities that require active student engagement and the authentic connection to real-life experiences that strengthen creative problem-solving, critical thinking, leadership, community service, and social skills. So what is deeper learning? Well, we've, we've been talking about deeper learning, and deeper learning involves teachers from every building and grade level working on classroom strategies and approaches for deeper thinking. For example, when I was on my walkthroughs, I saw an activity called Connect-Extend-Challenge. I saw See-Think-Wonder and Imagine If, and these are brainstorming techniques which are designed to enable students to use deeper-thinking strategies. If you look, you'll see information literacy, and what does that, what does that entail? That's the Media Specialist and the Social Studies Department. One of our initiatives is, it involves a co-teaching lesson with freshmen and sophomore history teachers. And what we're doing there is these lessons focus on how to conduct quality research, and which include various sources, understanding data. And I believe history and media specialists will be presenting at an upcoming meeting concerning this initiative, and you can learn more about it from them, the source. How we're helping goal number one and we're assisting is professional learning cohorts. What's professional learning cohorts, you ask? Supervisors are facilitating mini lessons, learning cohorts that allow teachers to research strategies on deeper thinking. These mini professional learning cohorts happen once a month after school during supervisor meetings, so our supervisors are working with them. STEM Pathways. The district is in the process of extending to our successful, or, excuse me, adding to our successful STEM Pathways program by adding two additional pathways programs, which include humanities and virtual and performing arts pathways. These two additional pathways will utilize the same model of dual enrollment courses and dual pathway distinctions. We've looked at senior internship. Goal number one, if you look at senior internship, the district is expanding the senior internship program from 25 to 50 students. And if you remember, you had a presentation given to you in September regarding this. Next year, the district will be piling a year-long internship program with approximately five students to begin. So what happens now generally in our internship program is, in May, after AP testing is done, our seniors begin, and they engage in about five weeks of internships with local community businesses, and they, they do about 20 hours a week for five weeks. Curriculum revision and teacher evaluations. Administrators are talking about deeper thinking as they evaluate teachers during pre- and post-conferences. Also, as teaching staff and administrators revise the curriculum, an increase in deeper-thinking strategies are being included in suggested activities. And finally, we, we are revising the screening process for GROW, because we've, we've listened to the communities, the community members are asking us. It's part of our strategic, you know, plan, and how are we doing that? The district is attempting to create more opportunities for students to be accepted into the GROW program by updating the screening process and the testing requirements for the program. If we look at goal number two, strategic planning goal number two, members of our learning community will receive support for social and emotional awareness, mental and physical health in order to flourish and demonstrate empathy and celebrate diversity for all. If you look at, if you look at the handout, you'll see that there are quite a few things that we're doing to assist goal number two. For example, our high school service nights and school-wide community service programs. The district is continuing our school-wide service nights and community projects. An example would be the toy drive sponsored by the Parsippany Regional Hockey Team, the canned food drives that we do. And we're planning a staff community service project for our June 4th Professional Development Day, where we're gonna try to get a blood drive organized for our staff members, and we're looking forward to that. Middle school skills course in sixth grade is a mandatory quarter course for all sixth-grade students, where they focus on 21st-century skills. Students are learning how to respond on social media, the pitfalls associated with social media. They're also learning about bullying, organizational skills, as well as study skills that will serve them. And we find this to be, this course to be very relevant now in some of the things that we are seeing, so we're getting good feedback from that. Student Leadership, Parsippany Leadership Retreat. This involves 150 students from both PHS and PHS. They get together and they gather on one side of town to engage in activities, small group discussions, which are relevant to all the students, and we're looking forward to that. Transition to kindergarten, the sixth grade and ninth grade. This includes our teachers and administrators. They're evaluating and reviewing current practices and strategies to ensure students' transitions to elementary, middle, and high school are seamless. If we see that we're having issues with students, then we try to reconvene with the administrators, discuss them, and try to put in some safeguards to help them. Administrative book study. Our administrators participated in a small group presentation with discussed, we discussed chapters of the book and how they are relevant to the daily work in our family life, and the book is "The Happiness Advantage," as you could see. The administrators discussed specific concepts and ideas from the book and how these concepts and ideas can be brought back to their buildings to be turnkeyed with their staff. The book study was very well-received by our administrators. It was fun, it was relevant, and the exercise, I believe, built camaraderie amongst our administrators. They really enjoyed doing the group presentations. Our Parent Informational Night. We have mental health and vaping. The district is bringing in guest speakers to educate parents on mental health and the dangers of vaping. In fact, there's a Parent Caregivers Guide to Vaping presentation scheduled for February 20th at 6:30 in the PHHS auditorium, and a flyer has been sent out to community members. If we look at our SEL Day, the SEL Day is a day scheduled on March 8th, 2024, where SEL activities are planned at each school in the district. Our Lifetime Fitness Class is a half-year course. However, next year, it will be a full-year course. The course focuses on the different strategies and decisions one can make to develop a healthier lifestyle. Student Advisory and Morning Meeting. At the middle school, our student advisory meets at least three to four times a month. Meetings focus on decision-making and expectations. In our elementary schools, there's more of a focus on wellness, self-confidence, communication, and feeling as such, like, feeling such as empathy, caring, kindness. And many staff members utilize the Stanford Harmony Program to assist with their morning meeting, and it seems to be working out well. The students seem to be enjoying it. Teachers are really finding that the students are coming in with a positive attitude. And finally, you know, our cultural holidays. The district calendar reflects cultural holidays, and principals are aware of various cultural holidays, and they remind their staff to be mindful of homework assignments or group projects or any of those things that could affect the students if they are celebrating a holiday. And I would just like to thank Dr. Mulrooney, who's really been instrumental in helping with this project. I mean, Dr. Mulrooney has, has really just done a great job on that side of town, and I can't thank him enough for helping me with the presentation and, and for guiding me, too. So, I wanna thank you, Dennis, and I know there's gonna be questions, and if, if I can't answer them, certainly, I'm gonna defer to Dr. Mulrooney. Yes?
Thank you for all that information. I do have a question about the gifted and talented revising and the screening process. Now, gift, the gifted program is state-mandated, correct? So, do they have guidelines? Are, are we just kind of flying on our own with these, you know?
My, my, my understanding is there was a rubric built, but I think that, you know, that's, that's a district initiative that, or, the rubric was a district rubric?
But, but to revise the screening process?
So, we're still within the state guidelines. I think last year, the year before, we had a few instances with twice-exceptional students. So, in the wake of that, we really tried to take a step back and look at how we were screening for students and how we were evaluating them. And so our new screening process is a little more unconventional, and it involves some classroom observations and a different assessment. And I didn't take, but Anna Mariruso took it, where they're kind of like, they're given a scenario, and the kids are asked to draw something, and they're, the aspects of their drawing reveal certain things about their potential for, you know, gifted abilities, so.
But, my question is, would the, is the state recognizing our program if we tweak it like that? Or, are these recommenda, I'm trying to...
Yeah, I don't know, I don't, to my knowledge, we're not flying against the state guidelines.
Okay.
Yeah, to answer your question.
Okay.
So, I give you, if I give you too many details, I apologize.
What?
If I give you too many details, I apologize. I get excited.
Thank you.
No worries.
Mr. Chappell?
Thank you very much. So, just two things I just wanna highlight or clarify. So, with regards to the improvements for goal one, I just wanna remind everybody that we did introduce courses that are now in line with college courses through NJIT and CCM, right?
That's the dual enrollment, correct?
Yeah, so we have a number of ones that we've been expanding over the years, so this continues to grow, right?
Particularly as we expand to two other pathways. So, we've had a lot of success with STEM pathways. However, our, our other supervisors and other, other students are interested in other things than STEM. So, with the humanities and the visual performing arts, we've already contacted and had meetings with universities to expand the dual enrollment, to offer more college credit and things like that.
Excellent. And then the other thing I wanted to highlight is with regards to goal two, the PLR. While there is guidance and support from administration, it's actually a student-led event, isn't it?
So, once, once we select a team, adults don't talk much at all that day. Students deliver talks about things like anxiety and relationships and academics and kind of being yourself. They run small group meetings. There'll be four seniors who run the whole thing. We're just there to kind of hand out pizza, make sure everyone's where they're supposed to be. It's a really great leadership exercise and, and exercise in developing skills and addressing the tough parts of being a teenager.
Right, and so I think it works on a number of levels. It, it works because you're giving students the opportunity to lead and present in a large forum, but also it's giving the kids an opportunity to hear from their peers, as opposed to having adults talk at them about these issues that matter to them. So, I, I just wanted to highlight those points.
In fact, that day, it's Thursday, March 7th, at the PAL Building. If anyone wants to stop by, you're more than welcome to. It's a, it's a great day. The kids, the, the talks they deliver, they do a really beautiful job. We pair a student from a highway, a student, a student from the hills, and they work together to kind of deliver.
What time would it be?
It'll be from 8:30 to 3:00.
On what date?
Thursday, March 7th. Depending on, you, you may get there during a, a really insightful discussion, or you may get there when they're going crazy in the gym doing icebreakers. You never know. But, Mr. Ricker and I started this a number of years ago, and it's, it's one of my favorite days the entire year. I know it is for Todd as well. Great day.
Dennis, can you repeat the date? That's going to...
Thursday, March 7th.
Thursday, March 7th.
PAL Building. Neutral grounds.
Neutral grounds.
Yeah. We did it, last time we did it at the hills, the kids get so distracted by the bell and what's happening everywhere else, so the neutral site was great.
Any other questions?
And just a reminder, behind the, the presentation that Dr. Sutter presented tonight, there is a multiple-page document that supports all of these, all of these items that Bob outlined for us in the presentation. So, thank you, Dr. Sutter. While there wasn't thunderous applause from the audience, it was an outstanding presentation, so we appreciate it.
Listen, I appreciate you guys paying attention. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any unfinished business to come before the board? I missed correspondence, I apologize. Any correspondence? No correspondence. Mr. Barrios?
Under the unfinished business, question is, have we heard, as relating to the current approved pilot program, have we heard anything from the mayor's office or anything remotely about, you know, next steps in this process as relates to the Board of Education officially?
No. We'll, we'll talk about pilots and their committee reports, but the short answer to your question is no. Any other unfinished business? No, seeing none. Committee reports, I do believe a few committees did, did meet, and let me, let me first apologize for the delay in getting the committee assignments and dates out. Joni did send me some information a little over a week ago, which I gave her some feedback on. It's just been a little bit of a delay in, in finalizing that, so I'll, I'll take responsibility for it, and we'll get those out as soon as we can. Before I go into the other committees, I'll just do a quick recap of the past two weeks since our last meeting. Dr. Sutter and I worked on a couple of things that, that came our way in terms of parent questions that were posed to the board. One was a question regarding the calendar concerning Eid and Diwali. The parent was suggesting that perhaps we were, the district was adding one holiday and another, and Dr. Sutter clarified very eloquently that both Eid and Diwali are on the 2024 and 2025 calendar. There was some questions regarding what constitute an excused absence, and this is always, you know, somewhat complicated, but simple because it's, it is cut and dry, so I asked Dr. Sutter to just outline for the board for artification what that is.
Thanks, Mr. Chaffa. There, there are five available reasons that the state of New Jersey recognizes as excused absences, and those are religious observances, a college visit, take-your-children-to-work-day, participation in Veterans Day, and the closure of a busing district that prevents a student from having transportation to the school. Those are the five reasons that the state uses as excused absences. Otherwise, you know, there is no health-related absences that are fully excused. As only the six state-excused absences are considered excused, this is true for illness, for anything. So, for absences that don't meet the state criteria, the district has established our own district policy for attendance. Our policy for excused absences must be consistent with the New Jersey State Code and the statute for purposes of expectations and consequences regarding truancy, student conduct, promotion, retention, and the award of, of course, credit. So, I guess the long and short of it is, is that while there are six reasons for excused absences, if someone says to you, well, I've, I've got a doctor's note, or my child's, you know, been to the doctor, or they have a dentist appointment, that's okay. We, we, we understand that people are gonna be absent, but it's not an excused absence according to what the state says. If they, if they go above, like, for example, a full-year course is 16 absences at the high school, attendance counts, you lose credit. But, there's an opportunity for an appeals process if that happens, and bringing that doctor's note or those reasons to the appeals process is beneficial to the student.
Thanks for that clarification. Any questions regarding absences? No, okay, great. The New Jersey School Board Association has a program called Unsung Heroes, and it is a program to recognize high school students who, who may be exceptional but otherwise go unrecognized. And what the program asks is that each school district nominate students from their high schools to be an unsung hero. And I mentioned this to Bob last week, and he did contact both high school principals, and we do now have nominations for Parsippany High School and Parsippany Hills High School. And there will be a, an award ceremony on March 20th at CCM. So, I have not been to one before, but I understand it is a very rewarding program to attend. It'd be very emotional listening to the nominations and the nominees, you know, speak about their, you know, their life experiences. So, I do plan to attend on March 20th at CCM. I believe it starts at 5:30. You can find more information on the Morris County School Board Association website. Yep.
Can I comment on that?
Absolutely, please.
Yeah, I worked on that committee last year, and it was a, it's a great, great night. We were looking for sponsors, so I reached out to the teachers' union, thinking they might wanna sponsor, but I never heard from them, which is unfortunate, because I thought it would be a nice way for the teachers to support our students. The letter, we, the committee doesn't screen the letters. They go to somebody else, so that there's no... I mean, I can supply the board with copies of last year's. They are so moving. Those of us who were there last year were just, some of us, you, you were in tears with some of them. It was wonderful. It was a great night. I'm gonna Badger Joe again and see if I can get them, but it's like, yeah, I can't get him to respond, and I sent him all the paperwork! But it is, it's a great night. And if you, if small businesses that would like to sponsor a student, you know, if you wanna sponsor one of our high school students, that's fine. I mean, I can give you the paperwork, and we do not make any checks payable to New Jersey school boards. The checks will be payable directly to the student. So, if you know any small business or big business that would like to make any kind of monetary donation, it would be, you know, very well-received, just to keep you thinking.
I believe Mrs. Cogan and Mr. Barrios belong to the Chamber of Commerce, or maybe you could give it to, you know, Frank Hayhill or one of them, and, and to present it to the rest of...
I can get you copies of all the materials.
To, to present it, and, and maybe one of them would like to sponsor, you know, and, and it, it's definitely a very, very good reason, you know, to, to, for them to spend the money. And are they not doing middle school? I thought that...
No, we're not doing...
They're not doing middle school this year?
They really weren't supposed to do middle school here, because there was a snafu in the, the way it went out. That's why we did include. It's just for the high school.
Okay.
If you don't have a high school, then it's just your middle school.
Oh, okay.
It's one from each high school.
And Judy, if you wouldn't mind, you mentioned some materials that you can share with the board. Perhaps sending that to Dr. Sutter and Joni for distribution would be great.
Yeah, I think that New Jersey school boards reached out to all the guidance, guidance counselors at the school.
That's, that's right.
To all the whole...
And principals, too.
Mostly, yeah, but mostly the guidance counselor, and, yeah, but I will get that to everybody.
Okay, thank you. A few, just a few more points. Morris County School Board Association hosted its president and vice president's breakfast on Saturday, January 21st. Mrs. Goldrur and I attended, and our newly-elected Morris County School Board Association Director, Mrs. Mayer, was in attendance. I did share the... in attendance. I did share the presentation, any material that was provided to us with, with you all. Minutes in the agenda. This was the second annual breakfast of the Morris County SBA. The first one was prior to COVID, then of course it was suspended during those couple of years, and it's back on again. And the county is the only, Morris County is the only county in the state that's doing this, and it was actually a very, very good event. There was a brief update by the county school board association president, Ann Shirleyan Peterson, our NJSPA rep. The majority of the meeting was scenarios presented to groups that we broke up into small groups, and how to, how to address those things. All that information's been shared with you. I enjoyed it. The two-plus hours went by very quickly, and I look forward to the next one. Just want to mention again, the NJSP inaugural Women's Leadership Conference, April nineteenth. If you're interested, please sign up for that. And you may have received a few days ago, the NJSP board member survey. I completed that today. It took about three minutes. It was just very topical information about yourself and, you know, why you ran for the board. It goes very, very quickly. So if you're interested, please complete that. Excuse me. The reason we're having our meeting tonight and not tomorrow night as originally scheduled is there was an interesting Morris County SBA virtual meeting that will, will happen tomorrow night at six forty-five. And one of the topics will be pilots, and there are three others that are very, very good. So if you're interested in that, you can go on the NJSPA website and sign up for it. You get credit for attending, and it's a virtual meeting. It starts at six forty-five.
Yes, normal...
Yeah, please.
Sorry. Normally, we, some of us, or some people, will send a request to Joni to sign us up for it, but you can go into your own account, and it's, there's no charge for it, for, because we're, we're members. So we, we, each one of us can go in and sign ourselves up for it this time, being that, you know, Joni's under the weather.
Can I just, sorry?
Please.
I, I just wanted to let you know, one of the, the topics where the mandem is going to be presenting new programs. Then there is, one session will be, how does your board do this? Another one is, can school boards affect legislation, which I think is really interesting. And of course, the pros, the idea of our favorite topic, our pilot programs. And Councilman Lucella is going to speak, be a part of that session, discussing the pros as well as the cons. He's going to give both sides of it. So it should be, I think you can possibly do two. I think you have to pick two, because you won't be able to do all four.
No.
So that's just to give you a heads up.
Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. Committee reports, I believe we had CPAC that met. So Mrs. Abraham.
Thank you very much. CPAC met on January thirtieth, and it was a virtual meeting, and Mr. Cordwright was part of it as well. This particular meeting was led by Jerissa Mosseko of the Ark of New Jersey, and is part of the Planning for Adult Life How series. And IDD stands for Intellectual and Development Disabilities, and the topic at hand was college options for students with IDD, and it was hosted by our district. This workshop provided information about the different opportunities that college may offer your students with intellectual and developmental disabilities. It also suggested steps to add to your students' IEP that can help them orient, orient them with their differences between high school and college, and assess the supports offered to students with IDD. It began with a video of various college students with different disabilities, and how college looks to them. And it also discussed why go to college, and it discussed how it broadens and enriches a person's life, and how opportunities come up to develop a love for learning, critical life skills, navigating a new environment, meeting new people, taking risks, practicing self-advocacy and self-determination skills, and how to be autonomous amongst other skills. They discussed a major differences between high school and college, including mandatory versus voluntary, how to manage your time by yourself versus other people managing your time, time between classes, teachers being trained in teaching methods versus professors being trained in their areas of expertise, IEPs versus no IEPs, teaching environments versus a learning environment. Additionally, they spoke about a special education model versus an accommodation model, receiving services, how to have documentation such as your child study team and your IEPs and tests, which happens in high school, as opposed to having to be responsible for your own evaluations and proving your disabilities in a college setting. In addition to that, they also spoke about students and families, and how they can prepare for college by planning early, including visiting colleges, beginning their transition services in their IEP by age sixteen, setting measurable and nonmeasurable goals, understanding program options, meeting with their support services, and exploring accommodations that they may need in addition to other items. They also referenced ThinkCollege.net, which is a great resource. It's a national organization that is dedicated to developing and expanding and improving inclusive higher education options for people with intellectual disabilities. They also discussed how to pay for college via financial aid, Medicaid waivers, scholarships, disability services through agencies and foundations, and FAFSA. And it was very enlightening to see how many different programs are actually offered in many of our colleges in New Jersey. So there's over a dozen different programs offered at many, in many of our counties for individuals with IDD. And we have a couple of upcoming CPAC sessions. Next Monday is an in-person session here, and twenty-seventh is a virtual session. And that is my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions for Sheetal on CPAC? No. I believe finance also met this evening. I'm sure they don't have minutes prepared for tonight. Do you want to defer till next meeting, or do you want to give a?
I could give a quick summary.
Certainly.
The finance committee met tonight. Mrs. Abraham, Mrs. Chappell, myself, Mrs. Tedesco and Dr. Sutter met. There were several items on the agenda for tonight, one of which was the budget calendar. Now, the budget calendar has been going on. It started in October. It's a six-month process that will end with the adoption of the budget in April. So we went through just a couple of the highlights of the budget calendar. Also, we discussed the revenue budget, the tentative revenue budget for two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-five for the, for the new year coming up. One of the big differences was there's about a four million, four million dollars in revenue less next year than this year, even though there was a two percent increase. The big difference is the insertion of the capital projects for this year versus a much smaller amount for this coming year, and plus the insertion of two million dollars back into the capital reserves for, for this year. So other than that, most of it remained, most of the revenue budget remains the same except for the two percent capital increase from one hundred fifty-one million to one hundred fifty-four million. And, and then I just asked a question regarding interim audit work, which was simple. And that's it.
Any questions for Mr. Raye on the finance committee? Nope. Okay. So I'll just spend a minute or two on the ad hoc committee's meeting on January thirty-first. Present were Mrs. Golda, Mrs. Chappell, Mrs. Kogan, Dr. Sutter, Mrs. Tedesco, myself. And we sort of reviewed what had been done up until that point, including outreach to the township regarding, having a conversation about pilots and revenue sharing. Unfortunately, not much was, not much movement was made, you know, prior to this board being reorganized. So no, no, no one's fault on the board. It does take two parties to come to an agreement on a topic, and, you know, we're ready and willing. I'm not sure if the township is at this point yet. Dr. Sutter mentioned some options he was exploring. On the space side, he did approach the pastor of St. Christopher's Church to potentially buy their school, which was an elementary school, and some property behind the school. The pastor, I believe Bob, declined to, to want to sell that to us, so that is no longer an option, if you want to...
Yes, no, he, he was very receptive originally. Then he talked to the diocese, and then he got back to me and said that they just weren't interested in selling the school, but they were interested in selling the property. But I told him we weren't interested in the property alone.
Okay. Thank you. The committee then went through a list of needs for the board, including having the town provide us with some land to convert to a school, land to use for additional buses as we have increased enrollment, perhaps the town purchasing buses for us, some sort of revenue sharing agreement with the town, and someone mentioned setting up a trust fund for schools, which I believe would be developer-funded. So there's, you know, two issues with the pilots. One is the revenue sharing piece. As properties are taken out of the ratable base and given a tax abatement pilot program, there is no mechanism for the school to receive tax revenue on those, on those projects. So there's a decrease in funding while enrollment, enrollment is going up. So that's one, one issue. Even if we can accommodate the students in our existing buildings, we still have to pay for all the other things that are required, busing, teachers, et cetera. The other issue is space itself, and at some point, if the enrollment gets to a certain level, we're going to have to look at increasing our physical space. So one's more of a short-term problem, one's more of a long-term problem. But they are both, you know, heading our way. That's why it's imperative that we, you know, begin negotiations with, with the township in earnest sooner than later. The mayor has said numerous times that a lot of towns, towns in Morris County are using pilot programs, and Mrs. Tedesco was kind enough to go out to some other school districts in Morris County and ask them if, if they had a pilot in their town with township revenue sharing with them. For, for the most part, there was not formal agreements in place. There were a few agreements in place in, in the county, I think one in Cedar Grove. And Mrs. Kogan, through her, you know, powers of research, brought to the attention of the committee that Hanover Township actually has a formal ordinance in place where the town codifies the revenue sharing that it will provide from pilot projects to itself, the township, the Board of Education, the fire district, and, and the county, which is required. So I think there's some things for us to consider going forward. At last night's town council meeting, the mayor was to ask the question about whether or not he has met with the board or is intending to, and he suggested that he needs to meet with the business administrator and the council president to understand what their budget looks like. I take that as an imitation, so I, I think we give the mayor a week, let him do what he needs to do on the township side, and we formally request a meeting with him again. As I said, we have to get the conversation started in one way or another. I did meet with council vice president Negalia on Monday night. It was a brief meeting, forty-five minutes. Cordial, neither one of us had authority to negotiate anything on behalf of the township or the board, but, you know, my point to him was, how do we move forward with this? And he said he would take our concerns back to the mayor, which I'm sure he did, but I've not heard from either one since, since Monday. I also expressed to Mr. Negalia the issues we're having with Littleton Construction, and the delays in the building and construction department at Town Hall in regards to permits has now caused us to be over a hundred days behind schedule, and literally hundreds of thousands of dollars in cost overruns. That's taxpayer dollars. So I believe he did bring that up to the mayor, who will be looking into it. So hopefully that gets us some movement on, on the construction issue. Any, any questions on pilots? Mr. Berrios?
Thank you. Question more in line with our, on our part. So I have received a lot of communication from many members of the township, folks who have questions, and which I'm compiling, haven't quite finished them yet, but there are a number of very good questions, like for an example, one of the questions that keeps coming up is, well, you know, can't we just consolidate Par Hills and Par High and make it a regional Parsippany High School, blah, 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 blah. So all these, and they're all thinking out-of-the-box type questions. Are you setting up any type repository where we can not only submit these questions, but I think we need to let the public know that we've heard the questions, and we can maybe somehow answer it, whether it's posted on the website or some mechanism, you know? And again, you know, one of the, the chat, one of the things you do is you challenge people with, got an idea? They come up with ideas. So I want to make sure that we keep listening, but we also answer, so it doesn't seem like their, their questions are going unanswered and uncared for. The other, the other thing was on, on that subject is, I think, from a timeline perspective on, you know, like I said, I think the last time we spoke, fifteen fifteen is set to go ready for, for occupancy at the end of the year, and Cherry Hill is going to be ready late fall, whatever that date is. You know, I definitely think that we need to make sure that, that that is on a calendar someplace, and that calendar is somewhat public. So therefore, we can make sure that, you know, as we walk into things, you know, if come the end of the fall or beginning of twenty-five, things go a little haywire because of what's happening at Cherry Hill Road, that, you know, least people are aware of it, you know? I mean, we're talking about it, but I, I just, it's got to be kept talking about, because it's going to affect everybody at some point. That, that bill's coming due at some point, and it's going to be soon. I think that was on the pilots.
I just wanted to answer one question. So Tim, the question on submitting questions from the public or others, I think that's best served by sending them to the superintendent, and he can then decide which, you know, entity can best answer those. So let's, let's do that. So if we have questions coming to us, let's, let's forward them out to the superintendent for clarification. And apologies, I missed the town council report. I understand three board members did attend. I think it was Mr. Berrios, Mrs. Kogan, and Mr. Raye. So would you want to speak to that? Okay, you have a report. Thank you.
But I have a question.
A question on pilots? Okay, please.
Yes, more, more of the, I mean, as Mr. Berrios said, if, if there's questions being, as far as I know, the board has not received questions, but if, if there is a vehicle that may be introduced by the district, whether it's by the board or, or the administration, that could possibly be put on the website, you know, where, you know, in, in the front page, something that says, you know, you have questions, you know, pilot questions or whatever, you can, you, to, what do you call it, to, to enter it there, and, you know, and, and then we have a, you know, an answer page, so to speak. And, you know, and, and we can also distribute it maybe, you know, via Messenger or whatever, that, you know, that this is, that this is readily available on our website. I mean, that's one vehicle, because, you know, I, I wouldn't be comfortable with, with people just sending questions to, you know, to us individually. And it would be good for, for it to go via the, you know, the administration or, or our public website, and so that we could respond to it better. I mean...
Yeah, I think that's a great suggestion. So if I heard right, you want to, an FAQs section on the district website about the pilot projects?
Right, if people have.
And perhaps the ability for a member of the public to ask a question there.
And, and the other thing would be, my concern is that, yes, Dr., Dr. Berrios, sorry. Mr. Berrios has, has brought up, you know, what are we going to do as a district, because, you know, the ship has sailed and, and, you know, we were kind of left on the dock, and we, we have to figure out a way, how do we catch up with that, you know? And, and we can't necessarily wait until we start getting enrollment, you know, documents to the office, because at that point, we're going to be, you know, we're going to, but I don't know if we can in fact do anything ahead of time. I don't know if we can in fact do anything ahead of time. That would be the administration. I don't know if we could start pre-planning, you know, I don't, I don't know, because one of the issues is going to be redistricting, you know, because what schools are affected by Cherry Hill, you know, and, and, and there's a lot of, you know, and is that going to be, is that going to be, you know, that's not necessarily a board responsibility. It's not like the ad hoc committee takes care of that. It would be an administration responsibility to consider and, and determine whether they're going to, you know, redistrict and, and, and where are these, you know, if in fact, even if you think of fifteen kids, where are we going to put them, you know, kind of thing.
So I think, Mrs. Gold, again, you, I think, asked a question on the two avenues we have to pursue, is, is short-term funding and revenue sharing with the town on the pilots, right? So we have something in place with them and then the long-term impacts of the additional enrollment. And perhaps with Dr. Sutter's permission, Mrs. Tedesco could maybe talk to us about the demographers report and what you would volunteer to kind of do to, to look at what's coming our way in terms of potential enrollment.
Okay. So I looked at the demographers report from 2020 and I went through it and I compared it to the grid that I think Mr. Berrios had given us a couple months ago. And a lot of the developments that were on that grid are in the demographers report. So I just went through the website, the township website, I went through the different ordinances and there are a couple, which I was going to ask you guys also. There are a couple that are not part of the demographers report, but I think as, when I was speaking to you the other day, Andy, I thought that it was going to be one or two. I think it's a lot more than that. So I think that, well, I know that Joni did reach out to the demographer to see if he could just update it for us at this point because it might be a lot for me to try to do in a short period of time and do the budget at the same time. So, so we're waiting to hear what just an update would look like as far as money's concerned. I don't think that we need to do a full, like, demograph, you know, a new demography report because like I said, a lot of the, the, the things that they found in 2020 because of COVID got delayed. So those, those students that they had projected to be in the schools aren't here yet, but they're coming. And it's only because of the delays that they had in the building of those developments. Does every, does anybody have any questions about it?
No.
Does it make sense what I was saying?
Yes, yes.
I have a question, but not for you.
Okay.
The questions that have been coming in to our board member, are they all questions about the pilot questions? That's my question.
Well, yes, as it relates to, like, again, example was combining the two high schools into one high school. Had we done a cost benefit analysis on, you know, we, we put out a, a number of, you know, twenty-one thousand roughly a student, we've made that kind of public at one of our council meetings, you know, has there been a, a cost benefit analysis? And that may be the wrong term, but I'm just repeating what the question was, to make sure that that number is still real. So stuff like that. I mean, they were logical questions and without, you know, I'm not going to, I'm, I'm collecting them, I guess is my point, you know? So some of them are right on point, some of them get a little off, off base a little bit, but majority of them are on point relating to the, to the pilots.
Ms. Chappelle.
Thank you. And just to clarify, I know in a previous board meeting, we had discussed the fact that we would be creating an FAQ. So these new questions that are coming in would be added to that, right? We're not talking about creating a new FAQ or, or creating a new section. It should just be incorporated into the FAQ we've already talked about.
Yeah, if I recall, the FAQs that we spoke of earlier were sort of what the, the board and the administration were going to come up with is, is questions, and I think these additional questions are now going to be added to that as members, for members of the public.
Perfect, thank you.
But there, oh, sorry, but there has to be a, a vehicle to, to be able to, you know, to, to be able to enter a question and
Correct.
And be received by Joni or whomever.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I would, I would say the most effective way would be is if they email the superintendent at the superintendent email address because then, you know, both Joni and I receive that email and we can then either put it up on the FAQ or, you know, say that this question is, we can bring it back to the board and say, we don't know how relevant this is to go up there. So I think the decision would be made to send it to the, to the superintendent and then we can move from there.
I think what's happening is some of us who are a little louder than others are getting a lot of the questions.
But you've been attending the meetings, the town councils.
Plus I have a big mouth.
Right, yes.
If you, if you want to email me their questions, that would be fine.
I will do that, I'll do it tomorrow.
Absolutely.
And perhaps we'll ask communications to make sure that we're moving forward with those FAQs, both those generated from the board and administration and those received from members of the public. And I think, Suzy, your, your suggestion of going out to our, our school community with a communication that they're there and they exist and they have the ability to ask a question is a very good one.
Right. And before we move forward, before we move forward with having Mr. Raya and Mrs. Cogan give their point of view from council, I just want to make sure that Mr. Berrios wrote the liaison report and I, and I have a question, so I'm not going to do it now, I'm going to let them.
I wasn't going to say anything about the council report.
Yeah, I, I, I wrote it.
No, 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 you guys were just, they, they were present and you said you guys
Yeah, no, I mean.
Alice, a no comment. Jack, do you have anything you want to say about the?
Go ahead, Tim, if I can think of anything to add, I'll jump in, but.
Should I continue?
Yeah, please.
Okay. Okay, so the mayor, I'm taking this a little bit out of order from the actual meeting, but the mayor's report to the, to the public and to the council, the mayor was emphasizing the need for increased township revenues, that it was important for the revenues, that's what the pilots are about, and a couple of the things that he's been talking of to effective functioning and essential services to the community. So he reemphasized that. Under the, the need for revenue was a discussion about the cannabis ordinance that the mayor's office is reviewing, the current cannabis ordinance, and I have the ordinance number in the, the notes. And a focus on revisions to accommodate the establishment of cannabis dispensaries. There was a person during the public portion of the meeting from Happy Days Boutique who put in a application a year ago and wanted to know when their application was going to be reviewed. The mayor indicated that, you know, although he has some concerns that he felt that the revenue source to the town and the health benefits would be something that would have to weigh heavily in his consideration. Something that's going to affect at least us by our, our Lake Hiawatha schools, the North Beverick Road Streetscape Project is going to kick off on North Beverick Road. It's going to bring significant changes in the Lake Hiawatha area, especially as traffic goes. They, there will be disruptions. They are relocating Memorial Day Parade, for an example, to the 202 side and possibly the 2024 Fall Festival. They did not get into much detail as to what those would be, so transportation, you know, I'm not sure how this affects STA and the buses, but it sounds like this is a massive undertaking from what I was able to read about it. Also, the township is going to make a crackdown on speeding. The Parsippany PD has identified areas in the town, especially cut-through streets, one being Fox Hill Road in Rainbow Lakes, other being a couple of streets on my side of the town, Lake Hiawatha area, in which they're going to be cracking down and monitoring of speeds and although it wasn't exclusively school buses, but school buses will be included in the, in this, in checking for speed limits. Oil theft, the mayor highlighted the concerns regarding the oil theft and so did Chief Pantino, who was also there. I don't know if Joni was able to get it to everybody, but they have asked everybody to at least take one of these and if we can pass them out to the public because there is really a, an effort by the Parsippany PD to make a public awareness. And I believe on the 21st at the Parsippany Library, Main Library, there's going to be a town hall meeting in which they're looking for a lot of participation as relating to the oil theft concerns and there was a lot of information given about the oil theft concerns. Oh, okay. During the, during the council members' comments, Councilman Sella did inquire about discussions with the Board of Education regarding pilots. Mayor Barberio indicated that such discussions would occur following his meetings with Council President Carifi to review the township budget. He clarified that any funding allocated to the Board of Education would not impact a 2% cap. Additionally, Council Vice President, Mr. Negalia, reported that his, he had his meeting with Board President Andy Chaffo in his capacity as liaison to the board and few, a few items were discussed. So that is the story there. And then also the council addressed their agenda items and various other topics and that was pretty much the meeting. So respectfully submitted. And anybody else wants to add?
Yeah. Let, one thing. One of the public comments dealt with the need to address the town councils, their lack of transparency with the entire product, pilot program and their whole process and how they communicated with the, with the community. And I think that's something that we can learn from, that we want to keep the public, like, we're taking steps with the FAQs and we're taking steps to keep the public informed and, you know, because that could work, that, that'll work overall, overall. I think one of the frustrations that we had was just the, first of all, the lack of transparency and the intransigence of the entire process. That, that was, you know, I think that was probably, accounted for eighty percent of the frustration that was at the various meetings. So, but definitely we want to continue the communication and with the public and communicate as much as possible and, and maybe work on process. If there, if there are areas for improvement in any process, we, we should just continue to address that.
Let me just add, I forgot to add one other thing. Mr. President, I sent you, I sent it to you, Mrs., Mrs. Vice President and somebody else I sent it to, I can't remember, I'm sorry, Ms. Chappelle, sorry. Tax abatement report that was written in 2010 during the Christie administration, it was presented, has been sent to the councilmen and Mr. Frenzio mentioned this in his public comments. So he sent me a copy of the report, I just, I distributed to you, distributed to whomever you think is appropriate, so.
Yeah, thanks, Tim. I, I wanted the report here tonight, so perhaps Dr. Sutter, maybe, I think you were copied in on that, that email from Tim with the attachment, if you could distribute that to the board or ask Mrs. Benos to do that.
Sure.
Yeah, thank you, appreciate it. It was a lengthy report, twenty-seven pages, I did, I did read some of it. It's, it was from 2012, so it's a bit dated, but it's still very pertinent to what we're facing now. And I think it was a very, very good report, especially the conclusion. So if you can't or don't want to read all, all of the twenty-five other pages, read, read the conclusion page. I think it's, it's spot on to what we're facing now. Yep, Mrs. Gold.
In reading Mr. Berrios' report, I was concerned about the cannabis ordinance and then potentially revising it because Mr. DiPiero had worked and had made promises to the township and to a lot of parents at the time when he was involved in, in, you know, he did, he did get a, a lot of people to sign on to supporting him about this in that we would not be allowing any dispensaries in our town as a protection, that it could only be a warehouse and such. My concern would be the, how close they would be, as Mr. Berrios, you know, how close they would be to our schools, one, and second, because it could be very tricky. I mean, some, in some places, literally, the, the cannabis store was on the other side of the school, but because the, because the, the law says that it has to be a certain num, a certain distance from the front door. The, the dispensary that they were actually building was on the, on the backside of the school by the, by the fields, let's say, because that's, you know, it met the requirements of, of the front door. So, I mean, that's something that is a school district, we have to be very aware of. I mean, Oregon, if you read the, the headlines, you know, Oregon decriminalized, you know, this in 2020 and now they've declared a state of emergency because of their fentanyl and drug crisis. So, I mean, we have to, you know, I know we're, we're, we're doing the pilots, but at the same time, you know, the township needs to recognize that they can't sacrifice the children, you know, their safety for, for money, you know? So it, it's something that I don't know if at some point, okay, we're, we're going to have to do another ad hoc committee or something, but, but it's another thing that we're going to have to be addressing.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. Yes, you're absolutely right. There were some council members at the time the ordinance or the warehousing was, was passed that vehemently expressed that there would be no retail establishments in Parsippany. Unfortunately, they have since moved on and are no longer on the council and that's where we are. So thank you for that. Mrs. Mayor.
Yeah, I think that's something that should be brought up at a town council meeting when you can address the town council because that will get people thinking about that.
Yes, but at a town council meeting, I, I would, you know, I go in as a, as a resident, I don't speak for the board. I mean, and I, oh, I will, but I'm saying, but it's going to affect us
Right, but.
You know, as, as a district and as a board.
But a conversation can get started at that point.
Exactly, yeah. Thank you, Tim, for that report. And Mrs. Tedesco, I'm sure all of our district bus drivers, as well as our third-party contracted bus drivers, obey all speed and traffic laws, correct?
Andy?
Yes, Mrs. Mayor.
I don't know if this is the right time because I was trying to figure out when to slip this in, but I wanted to report out on some things that I attended.
Yeah, please, absolutely. I wasn't aware, but sure, sure.
The breakfast, of course, I thought was great. I thought the food was good, I mean, I was happy. And the, the list of things that were given to, you know, people that were, there were twelve tips for new board presidents, it was from the Alabama School Boards Association. You know, reading them, I think they're really good and my advice would be maybe we can keep them in a president's binder and so come down the line when we have new leadership, whenever. That would be something that would be useful because I think they had really, and the discussions were really good at all the different tables. So that was a great experience. The other thing that Mrs. Cogan and I both attended was the Muslim Heritage Month, which was, they had to reschedule it and it was at the library and it was a really wonderful occasion. They, they had speakers, the children were there, they had an author talking about a book, they were singing, it was just really fun to be there. They had information, I took some pamphlets just to kind of get a head up on what are some of the things. We were welcomed very warmly, they were so happy to have us there. It was just a really nice, every time I've gone to these kinds of things, we're always welcomed with open arms and they want us to experience what they do. And so it was just a really good time. The other thing that Dr. Wright and I both experienced, because I saw your name, was the board's role in the annual budget. I didn't know if anybody else was on there, but it was very interesting because I've been on the board for, you know, a few years, but it was like talking about it very simplistically. but it was like talking about it very simplistically. The new thing is there's a board administrator in, not a board, a business administrator in residence, which I thought was, that's a new thing that they put out.
At the NJSBA, correct?
Right, yes. It's, it was interesting. The point that Charlene made was the budget tells the district's story. How you build your budget tells the story of the district, what you prioritize. Community expectations, needs, affordability, that's all put in there. New Jersey CUSAC always looks at, when they come in to do us, which not for a while, I hope.
No, I think not for a while.
But they look to see, did you plan your, you know, how you planned your budget? Did you send out, were the goals aligned with your curriculum? Did you have notices out, you know, for the public and then how it was adopted? And the other question was, and this was an interesting one, how does the board provide for increase in student population? I thought that was like, oh my gosh, if anybody could answer that, it would be a miracle. But I thought it was really good. Dr. Wright, what did you think? I mean.
I thought it was really.
It was very.
I also thought it was a really great presentation and I felt like I, you know, learned a great deal and particularly about the complexity of the various ways that the different types of revenue coming from the state are calculated and where, places where, you know, they talked about the software. I was like, oh, there's software about, you know, how the budget is created and how things are changed annually. I thought it was really helpful. And we also, I'm sure you have them in your email as well, we have the recording and the PowerPoint slides we can share.
Yes, we can send the recording, we can send the video to Joni or whoever and she can get it out to everyone.
Yeah, that would be wonderful. Thank you.
But it was just good. It was a good, like, refresher and like, oh, really, kind of thing.
I wasn't aware. Who hosted it? Was it the NJSBA?
It was Charlene and one other woman. I can't remember her name.
I don't remember the name, but yes, it was through the NJSBA's.
And then the power went down in Charlene's and we're all like, okay, but she got her generator going.
Yes, and budget for electric expenses.
Yeah.
Let's see, we are at.
Mr. Chaffo.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
I just have one event coming up on the, this Saturday at 10:30. There's going to be a ribbon cutting for a new business and the business was started by three PHS alumni, like recent alumni.
Great.
So they wanted all the board members to be aware and they were, they are invited to the ribbon cutting if you would like. It's at 10:30 this Saturday, 90 East Halsey Street.
Would you mind dropping us all an email? Because I'll forget.
Yeah.
What kind of business did they open?
It's a marketing, like video marketing and media company. They're, they're very excited and they're very proud alumni.
That's, that's wonderful. That's, that's great.
Andy?
Yes, Dr. Wright.
Can I add two things? I also attended NJSBA webinar on school climate and culture. That was actually today. And it was also really interesting kind of thinking about, it was in some ways like an exhortation of the board to figure out how to be present in the process and how to see and understand climate in, in a rich way. And, you know, it explained the ways that the state mandates, you know, data be given around climate, but also discussed the other complex ways that the board might participate and understand what climate means. And some of the things, like specifically they gave, they were like, here are some things that board members should be particularly interested in. So what data is the state collecting that helps to see the school climate and, you know, how does the board, you know, see that data, understanding what policies our districts have to help create a positive school climate, which I think you've done a great job. Some of that was answered tonight. You know, like that peer leadership, I thought was like, that's exactly the kind of thing they're talking about. It's great. And then how are building level staff being supported in various ways and then ensuring that climate is supported for all students. And, you know, I was, I was pleased even in my short tenure to be able to be like, ah, I know some of these answers already and I think we're doing great work. And it was, it was another, really, I don't teach Wednesday mornings, which is often their slot. So it's, it's been easy for me to kind of jump on these webinars. I've appreciated it very much.
Thank you for that. And I vaguely recall, there was a climate survey done a few years back. Am I remembering that right?
Mm-hmm.
I don't recall the results of it or anything, but I know we've done it before and maybe I'll go back in history and look at, look at that up a little bit to see what, what came of that survey. I appreciate everybody volunteering information. You know, the agenda for the board meeting is pretty structured, but I like the free flow of information because we're all doing so, so much and spending so much time trying to better the district, whether it be attending seminars or serving on committees. So thanks all for that. So yeah, please remind me next meeting if I don't stick to, you know, the agenda as well. I do want to hear what everyone's doing because it's really, really interesting and you're spending a lot of time doing it. Anything else anyone has before we move on?
Well, I just wanted to ask Mrs. Cogan.
Here's your microphone.
Oh, sorry. I just wanted to ask Mrs. Cogan, what is the business about? Do you know the?
Marketing, marketing.
Yeah, video marketing.
Video marketing? Okay. All right. No.
So approval of the minutes, executive session one and two and regular minutes of January 25th, 2024. May I have a motion, please?
Motion.
Ah, Mrs. Mayor. Second, Mrs. Goldur. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Nope.
Mr. Raya?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldur?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Yes. Were you a yes on the minutes?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
That's okay.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And superintendent's bulletin number 13, Dr. Sutter?
Did we?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Did we not do the public speaking?
Not yet.
Why am I out of sorts? Sorry. I apologize.
That's okay. Thank you, President Chaffo. Good evening, everyone. Congratulations to Parsippany High School musician Carlos Ramirez, who was selected by Arts Ed New Jersey to serve as one of 10 student members of the Youth Arts Education Council. As a member of this council, Carlos will be participating in weekly virtual meetings, working closely with fellow committee members and Arts Ed New Jersey staff, and playing an active role in planning and implementation of the Youth Arts Education Summit this spring. I want to also personally thank Mr. Anthony Agidio, as well as his assistants and coaches, players on the Parsippany Regional Ice Hockey Team, as well as to the Morris Catholic St. Elizabeth Ice Hockey Team for hosting a toy drive during their senior nights on January 24th at the Menon Arena. The toy drive benefited the pediatric oncology and hematology patients at the Goriad Children's Center, and I must say that the toy drive was an overwhelming success. Players and coaches from both Parsippany and Morris Catholic St. Elizabeth were able to deliver these toys to the Goriad Center. As Mr. Agidio stated, I can't speak for everyone, but this was an incredible and emotional experience. Just knowing these toys will brighten these children's spirits during very difficult times is truly special. So I want to thank you, Anthony, for representing the kindness and compassion which is emblematic of our district. And finally, at our last BOE meeting, I want to report that the footings and the block work for the new addition at the Littleton School were near completion. I'm happy to report that that work has been completed. The contractor is starting the underground plumbing and prepping the foundation slab to pour the floor. Tonight, for your approval, we have Superintendent Bolton items 1 through 25 with Addendum and Read-Ins items 26 through 41.
Thank you, Dr. Sutter. Questions for Dr. Sutter? No questions. Mrs. Tedesco, secretary's report, please.
Hi, everyone. On tonight's secretary's report, we have our regular business motions. Our report is short and sweet. Anybody have any questions?
No questions. Thank you. Any new business to come before the board? Dr. Wright?
I'd just like to recognize Black History Month and I really appreciate the students saying that it's being recognized at the school and it's important for us to take note. Thank you.
Thank you. No. We are at the hearing of the public. At this time, if there's anyone who would like to address the board, please come up, sign your name and address in the book. At the lectern and state your name for the record and please address the chair. Each person will have three minutes to speak to the board. It would be helpful if you would like to address the board. Please come up now and sign the book so that you are ready when the first speaker is finished. As a reminder, we are video recording the meeting. If you are a student who wishes to speak, we ask you not to provide your home address, but rather give only the name of the municipality in which you live. If you're a parent wishing to discuss a specific matter pertaining to your child, during this portion of the meeting, you may request that the board temporarily suspend the video recording. Alternatively, please consider speaking privately about the matters of the superintendent after the meeting. Speakers should refrain from using specific student or staff names in their comments and are referred to by law 0168 for further information regarding the videotaping. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Cindy LaPresti. I'm from Parsippany High School. I am now running Project Graduation. So there is my question. I know that our PTA president was here, I think it was maybe November timeframe, speaking with the board. So I'm following up now that I am heading it up at the high level. Although I do speak with Desiree over at The Hills. She is brand new to this and doesn't have maybe as much guidance as I'm fortunate enough to get from the previous woman who, who handled all this. So I, whatever information is given to me, I will definitely pass on to her. I don't even know if she was aware there was a board meeting or anything like that tonight. So I know in the budget, generally speaking, the board donates some money towards Project Graduation. I don't know what that is. The one thing that I do have on the high level is that we lost our deposit. And I guess that was due to the fact that graduation dates changed two years in a row. The first year that it changed, they were willing to roll it to the following year and then it was changed again. So then we lost it. So that was $1,500 from the high side. Other than that one specific detail, it would be, I would pass on the information to Desiree. So was anything decided or, I don't know who to address this to?
So we'll close the public meeting. Then I'll ask the superintendent perhaps if you would like to comment on that. But thank you for your question about Project Graduation. I know there was some issues with it the last couple of years.
Yes, I'm sorry. I don't, so you don't answer until the end?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Nobody else?
Any other members of the public? Seeing none, we'll close the public session. Just, just ask Brian before the meeting, how many people are logging onto YouTube to watch the video recorded meetings? He says that each, each meeting has about 100 people that log into it. So at least 100 people are watching our meetings, which isn't, isn't too bad. Dr. Sutter, would you mind?
Yeah. Speaking of Project Graduation. Hello, Mrs. LaPresti. Yeah, if you could contact me, because I really don't know much about your deposit and things of that nature. So if you would contact me via email or call me on my tele, on the phone, we can discuss that further.
Okay.
All right.
As regards to what applies to The Hills in the high, do you want to contact you regarding that as well, or is that a general, every year it's the same type of thing? That's what I don't know.
Yes, if you could just contact me and we'll speak on the phone and we'll get to the right parties and address your answer. Okay.
Okay, thank you. I think we're up to the roll call vote for the superintendent's bulletin, items 1 through 25 with Addendums 26 to 41 and Read-Ins. Can I have a motion? Mrs. Abraham, seconded by Mr. Barrios. Roll call, please.
Mrs. Abraham?
Yes.
Mr. Barrios?
Yes.
Mrs. Cogan?
Yes.
Mrs. Mayor?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Raya?
Yes.
Mrs. Chappell?
Yes.
Mrs. Wright?
Yes.
Mrs. Goldur?
Yes.
Mr. Chaffo?
Yes. Any other business? No. Motion to adjourn? Mrs. Cogan, second by Mrs. Goldur, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, everyone.